So I want to call this meeting of the Montclair City Council to order. And this will be a very busy meeting for us today, so I ask my council colleagues that we'll take our time as we get to this meeting this evening. Invocation, do we have some?
Yes.
Okay, so we will begin our meeting with the invocation and then the pledge allegiance, and then, Mike, can you announce those two invitors, please?
Yes, our invocation will be by Chaplain Vicki Brobeck, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman or Councilmember Root.
Okay, please stand.
Shall we pray? Eternal God, whose name is wonderful counselor, mighty God, everlasting Father and Prince of Peace, we appeal to your goodness this day. Grant us your presence that would accompany us this holiday season for one and for all. Reveal your plan in the depths of our hearts, surround us with your unfailing love, and grant us to know your peace. Comfort those whose lives are difficult at this time, bring reconciliation to families, and grant us health and strength for the days ahead. In Jesus' name, amen.
Okay. Do we do our pledge? Bill?
Please join me as we salute the flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Now we have roll call. You okay to take roll call, Mike?
Yes. Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez. Thank you. Councilmember Root?
Present.
Pro Tem Johnson?
I'm here.
Thank you. And Mayor Dutre.
I'm here, thank you. Okay, next two items will be presentations. The first presentation is by our Community Activities Commission to present the 2022 Holiday Home Decoration Contest winners. And so tonight, I had the great pleasure to recognize three families who have won the Holiday Home Decoration Contest. And I'm going to ask Rosa Rogel, who's a member of the Community Activities Commission. Rosa, don't be shy, come on up, and she's going to announce the winners, and I'll come down there and give them the blacks. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, as the Commissioner of the Montclair Community Activities Commission, it gives me a great pleasure to announce the winners of the City of Montclair's 24 Annual Holiday Home Decoration Contest. There were many outstanding nominations, and this year was no exception. As always, the judging was very difficult. A total of 90 nominations were received this year. The Commission tries to give everyone an opportunity to be selected, therefore, past winners are not eligible for three years. Last Monday evening, the CAC drove around and judged every entry. We applaud everyone for doing an excellent job of enhancing Montclair's neighborhoods during the holiday season. After I read a brief presentation and descriptions. I think I just went too fast, too soon, okay? Okay, I say, okay, we applaud everyone for doing an excellent job of enhancing Montclair's neighborhoods during the holiday season. After I read a brief description of each home and show a PowerPoint presentation, I will ask the winners to come forward to be presented with a frame certificate from Major John de Trade and a gift card that they choose to a store or restaurant in Montclair. The home of the barkholder family is located at 101-69 Camulus Avenue. Joyfully shines bright with candy canes. A festive snowman family greets us into their colorful home. A gingerbread man stands guard nearby, accompanied with charming friends. Even Mickey Mouse stops by to say hello. Another surprise is out by peeking out through ornaments that spells out joy. Guiding us through this wonderful experience is a grand blow-up of Frosty the Snowman wearing a top hat. In front of Frosty is a bright activity scene. The house roofline and windows are all decorated with beautiful lights and impressive ornaments that make the house shine. We even saw Santa about ready to dash through the night sky. The barkholders, please, they wear previously a holiday home decoration. They won this contest in 2018. I would like the barkholder family to please come forward to accept the Welcome to Snowmanland Award.
All right. Berko, you will have a family member of Liz on, or should we?
No, I don't.
No? Oh, there's another Berko.
Yeah, I did that last time.
Okay. Well, congratulations.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
And it looks very beautiful. It's a lot of hard work tonight, really. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. A house that cannot be missed is the Boogie Family Home, located at 109-90 Kimberly Avenue. A magnificent reindeer stands at the front yard, welcoming all guests to this magical home. A snowman brings joy to this holiday season, and behind him is a sparkly star hanging above the family doors that is adorned with a trio of lighted holiday wreaths. A baby elephant caught our eyes as he playfully toyed around with an ornament. A variety of holiday lights and animated holiday figures, including tall palm trees, a penguin, and a candy cane, brighten up the scene. Is a colorful shoe train full of toys and candy canes that decorate this yard. An activity scene resembling stained glass is also displayed and includes three wise men bearing gifts. And this is the concluded description of this house. Will the Boogie Family please come forward? And the Boogie Family was also awarded and won this contest in the year of 2018.
Congratulations. Too good all the hard work. You. Both of you, okay. There's a plaque for you, and we'll put the red lobster there, and we'll take some pictures. Perfect, yes. All right.
Thank you. Finally, visitors of ages will be delighted to experience a magical journey through the Musins Family Home straight for the North Pole at 101-100-49 Marion Avenue. We start our adventure at the Arctic Ocean, represented by blue lights fluttering over the yard. To welcome us is a charming little helicopter full of excited elves. We were also greeted by a group of sparkly snowmen cheerfully smiling at us by the driveway. Santa made his appearance by waving at us on top of a peaceful polar bear. Bright snowdriesels down from the rooftop, leaving majestic snowflakes on their windows. A vibrant train carries gifts throughout all the North Pole, likely helping Santa deliver gifts to put under the several decorated Christmas trees displayed around the yard. Would the Musins Family please come forward to accept your presentations, your award, Journey to the North Pole?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations to all the hard work, beautiful work.
Congratulations to all the winners. Members of all community are encouraged to view all these homes. At least some of the winners is available this evening and will be available this week at the City Hall and on the city's website and Facebook page. Please drive and view the beautiful decorations and holiday spirit exhibited by the residents of Montclair. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and again, congratulations to all those, and obviously I want to wish everybody a happy holiday, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and of course, a happy prosperous 2023. With that, I'm going to move on to our second presentation, which is from the California Department of Insurance, and I believe it's Andrea Valdez. There she is, she snuck on me. Welcome to Montclair.
Hi, thank you so much. Excited to be here. So Honorable Mayor and City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to present information about the State of California Department of Insurance and the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program. So again, my name is Andrea Valdez, and I'm an outreach analyst for the department's Community Relations and Outreach Branch. I don't want to take up too much of your time today, so I definitely shortened my presentation, but I'd be happy to present at any of your upcoming events, any community events as well. So I'm just going to give a little brief overview. Not a lot of people know about the Department of Insurance, so it's also known as CDI. That includes a short, hold on just one second. So yeah, a brief overview of the California Department of Insurance, again, also known as CDI. I'm going to go ahead and touch on senior resources, and then I'm going to go ahead and talk about our California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program, what it is, how you qualify, and how you can apply for the program. And then I'll follow it up with how we can partner to share this program with your community. So I just want to start off by saying that we do not sell insurance. We regulate all lines of insurance, including homeowners, auto, life insurance, and many more. We also regulate the insurance companies, agents, and brokers that sell insurance, and California insurance companies collect over $340 billion in annual premiums, and that's what you and I pay in premiums. So your current elected insurance commissioner is Ricardo Lara, and he ensures that insurers are solvent, consumer complaints are addressed in a reasonable manner, and insurers and licensees play fairly in the marketplace. Everything we do at CDI is to protect consumers from fraud and abuse. So what can we do for you, the consumer? Anytime you have a question about insurance, call us. If you're shopping for insurance and want to know more, please visit our website. A big thing is if you're denied a claim or coverage, your agent or insurance company not returning your calls, call us and please file a formal complaint. We're here to help you. So we have our website, that's insuranceca.gov. You can go ahead, file a complaint, and we do have our number there. And then another thing that I'm just going to briefly touch on is our Saper from wildfires. So when Commissioner Ricardo Lara came into office, he listened to California residents and our first responders to tackle the immediate needs, and one of the major issues that we heard across the state is non-renewals and premium increases for home and businesses. And to address this issue this year, Commissioner Lara launched Saper from wildfires. It's our state's first inter-agency partnership to protect lives, homes, and businesses by reducing wildfire risk. So it's a three-step program. We do have more information available online about that. And then we also offer senior resources. So this is our Senior Gateway Portal, which is a one-stop shop for seniors and their caregivers. It's a partnership between many state agencies with everything in one spot. You're going to find information on topics such as avoiding or reporting abuse and neglect, preventing fraud, healthcare information, your rights, and other resources. And that website is seniors.ca.gov. So the big thing that I'm going to touch on today is our California Auto Insurance. So why do you need auto insurance? It's because it's the law. So if you drive a car in California, the law says you have to have evidence of financial responsibility. One way is to buy auto insurance. At minimum, you have to have liability insurance. Liability insurance means if you cause damage to someone else's property, you have to be able to pay for it. It will not cover damages to the car that you caused. If you get pulled over and you can't prove that you have auto insurance, you can be fined, your license suspended, your vehicle possibly impounded, and all these costs could add up to more than buying insurance from this state-sponsored program. So with CLCA, it was established by the legislators in 1999. A CLCA policy offers the basic minimum liability coverage to drive legally. Since its inception, the program has evolved, and now it's available to almost all low-to-moderate income Californians, as long as you're income-eligible and not a bad driver, you can qualify. So a big thing is how do you qualify? So first of all, you have to have a valid driver's license. The value of the car has to be under $25,000, not financed with a loan. Check your income level. It's based on the number of people in your household, including all dependents. You have to be at least 16 years old. And lastly, you cannot have a bad driving record for the past three years. If you have more than one point on your record or an at-fault accident with bodily injury, you will not qualify. So these are income eligibility guidelines. You can go ahead and check that out online, but it's based on different areas over the state. But just to give an approximate, if you have a four-person household, the maximum income level is $69,375. And then to qualify, you just need proof of income. A complete list of acceptable proof of income is available on our website. Just a couple examples, Paystub, W2, 1099. If you're currently enrolled in another state or county program like CalFresh, CalWorks, Medi-Cal, excuse me, you will also qualify for the CLCA program based on income. So how do you apply? You can go to mylocostauto.com, take the eligibility questionnaire. It's only seven questions, and then you're going to go ahead and fill out an online application, and then an agent will contact you to gather the documents and collect the down payment. And we do have our chat feature available in English and Spanish as well. And then how you can partner with CDI and CLCA, so I'm sure you're thinking it's a great program, so you want to share it with your organization. So just help us get the word out, share the CLCA program, any of our other programs as well, on your website, social media platforms, invite us to attend your outreach events. I've been doing a lot of outreach events, a lot of senior scam stoppers as well. I can also speak at staff's trainings, and then refer us to any other partners that you work with to low-to-moderate income households. We also have a lot of free informational brochures. I'd be more than happy to mail those over as well. So if you have any questions, you can go ahead and visit mylocostauto.com. And again, any insurance related questions, please contact us. We're here to help you, and that's our consumer hotline there. And thank you so much. I really appreciate being here tonight.
Thank you very much for being here and giving us a presentation on the California Department of Insurance. Obviously, you guys do some important stuff for the community, for our citizens.
Yes, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, now we're going to get down to public comment. Again, this is an opportunity for members of the public that wishes to comment on an item that's not on the agenda, or wish to discuss an item on the consent calendar portion of the agenda or the business item portion of the agenda. If you wished, again, to discuss a public hearing item, which one of them is the Mission Tiki Theater, I please ask you to hold on until we get to that agenda item. So if you're on Zoom, or if you're on a phone, this is an opportunity where you raise your hand, ask to speak under public comment, or hit star nine on your phone. And if you haven't already, fill out a speaker's card. So I'm going to ask Mike Diaz if we have any members of the public that wishes to comment at this time.
I have no written request to comment on non-agenda items.
Okay. Everything so far is regarding the public hearing item?
No raise hand on the Zoom.
Okay, so right now, what we have is for a public hearing item. So we have nothing under public comment. So now I have public hearing. We do have two public hearing items. The first public hearing is a second reading to consider adoption of ordinance number 22-1002. This is regards to the building codes. Again, if you wish to comment on this public hearing item only, this is an opportunity. We can raise your hand if you request to discuss the public hearing on the building code, or submit a card. And of course, I'll open the public hearing. I don't see anybody requesting, so I'm going to close the public hearing on this item. And before I talk about this item here, now is an opportunity for you to go ahead and request to speak on the next public hearing item, which is Mission Tiki. Raise your hand, hit star nine, and please do it this time, or submit a card as well. So regarding the second reading item here, do we have any comments or questions from council? If not, can I get a motion? Councilmember Bill Root, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. On this item, this is something we have to do to adopt the Uniform Building Code. The issue I have with it, I can't change this, is that by 2030, you will not be able to buy gas appliances if the legislation stays as it is in the state of California. You will only be able to buy electric appliances. So for those of us who have homes that are fairly much gas, have a gas-water heater, gas oven, gas stove, gas dryer, you name it, it's pretty much a gas home, we're going to have to, one, buy all new electric appliances, and, two, do a panel upgrade and a wiring upgrade on our home. You're looking at a very expensive proposition. It's my hope that between now and then, the legislature can do something different for those of us that will find it cost prohibitive to upgrade our homes. So I just, that's a cautionary tale to the public to just be aware that that's what's going on. This requires dual hookup, so the home is wired for gas and electric, and then eventually all builders will simply have to do all-electric. So this is an issue, and certainly, although I have to vote for this tonight, I'm not in favor of this all-electric mandate. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lopez?
I will piggyback on my colleague's comments. I'm not in favor of this. These are mandates forced upon the localities by the state that will no doubt incur cost on working families within our community and up and down the state. I am also against the force requirement that folks transition to more expensive means electricity and heating, warming their homes, and that's the battle that we will have to face and fight here in California. With that, folks, I intend to vote for this reluctantly, and as my colleague has said in the past, against my better judgment. Thank you.
Okay, so I believe Councilmember Root moved. Councilmember Lopez seconded the motion. Be read by a number of title only, and let's go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Do you want me to read the title?
Yeah, read the title if you want, start with.
Ordinance number 22-002. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montclair, amending specific chapters of Title 10 of the Montclair Municipal Code and adopting by reference the 2022 Edition of the California Building Code, Volumes 1 and 2, including Appendix Chapters C and F. The 2022 Edition of the California Residential Code, including Appendix AX, the 2022 Edition of the California Plumbing Code, the 2022 Edition of the California Electric Code, the 2022 Edition of the California Mechanical Code, the 2022 Edition of the California Green Building Standards Code, the 2022 Edition of the California Fire Code, including Appendix Chapters A, B, BB, C, CC, H, F, and K, and the 2021 Edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, together with certain amendments, additions, deletions, and exceptions, including fees and penalties.
Okay, let's get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Root?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Dutre?
Aye, so it's adopted by zero. Okay. Now we have the next item, which is a public hearing item. I'll open the public hearing. This is to consider adoption of several resolutions. This is regards to the developed, proposed development at the current Mission Tiki site. Again, if you wish to speak on this item, this is a good time for you to raise your hand on your, if you're on Zoom, the raise hand feature, request to speak. If you're on the phone, hit star nine. If you're in the audience, fill out one of these cards, and you give that to Mike. Soon as the presentations are done, we're not going to accept any more requests. So staff will write down the request for those who wish to speak, and then once the presentation is done, if you raise your hand afterwards, request to speak after the presentation, and you're not one of the persons that have already indicated the request to speak, we will not recognize you. So I'm going to now give this item to staff to provide a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Dutre and members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and bring this project and take on a new responsibility today for myself and John. We are going to do a presentation for you that'll help sort of tell the story about the project before you tonight. This is the Mission and Ramona Business Park Project. It's at the northwest corner of Mission Boulevard and Ramona Avenue, and this picture depicts kind of a bird's eye view of what the project will look like when it's completed, if it's approved tonight, and it's looking towards the northwest. All right. The location, as you know, is at the northwest corner of Mission Boulevard and Ramona Avenue. The total site area is 27.74 total acres of area. The site, although it looks like one complete big site, is actually composed of nine smaller sites ranging from about a 12,000 square foot lot to about nine acres. The Mission Tiki Drive-In Theater currently is operated on that site. There are four screens, a projection and snack bar building, a surface parking area, obviously it's in the black, you can see there, and an industrial building at the north end of the site. There's also a swap meet event that occurs there, I believe, every week. These are the current, pictures of some of the current conditions of the site. You can see on the upper left corner is a depiction of the site. I presume that looks like when the swap meet is in operation during the day. You've got a corner view on the upper right side, and then some interior shots of the interior of the site showing the paved areas, as well as one of the screens. This is the same picture that you saw on the title sheet without the title in the middle of it, so you can get a better clear view of the area. You can see that the two larger buildings are on the north side of the project site, nearest the Royal Road tracks, and the smaller buildings, the six building development on the south side of the street is what most people will see going by that intersection. A plan view of this, a site plan of this particular project shows Buildings 1 through 6 on the south side of the project site. It shows Third Street that extends eastward from where it currently ends on the west boundary of the site, and then will proceed all the way to Ramona Avenue, will provide an intersection area, a new intersection for the project site. Buildings 7 and 8 are on the north side. These are the largest of the buildings, and you'll note that the truck areas are in the middle between the buildings, so they are not on the exterior side. You're likely not to see them from most vantage points around the site. In order to get to this point, or get to the project development, there are several things that needed to take place. One was to do a general plan amendment to reconcile the, or to reconcile the two land use designations for that site. The table to the right there indicates on the upper area where it says general plan, we're going from existing general commercial all the way to changing to M1 and industrial park. And these are, M1 is on the north side of the Third Street extension, and Industrial Park would be on the south side. The second element would be a zone change, and that's to ensure that there's consistency between the zoning map as well as the general land use map. And the table also shows you that there are three different zoning designations on that site that will be simplified into two zoning designations to correspond to the general plan amendment and the way the site has been divided up by the extension of Third Street. You saw earlier, there was six, eight buildings on that site, each one of those is a lot, and to achieve that, they'll need to get an approval tonight for a tentative tract map, and that's number 220381. And then lastly, the buildings, the landscaping, the signs, all the rest of the elements of the project are covered by your last motion tonight, which would be a precise plan of design that would approve the details of the site, so to speak, and we'll see some of those images on the next slides. General Plan Amendment, this shows, depicts how the site is currently laid out. That's what the left drawing shows. And then you can see how the site gets simplified into two halves by the extension of Third Street, and then the north side and the south side being created that will have their general plan, their general plan land use designations. The zone change depicts pretty much the same item, the way, but these are zoning designations, and there's three of them on the left side that currently exist on that site. When you extend Third Street, you divide the site into two again, and then you have zoning designations that mirror or match or are consistent with the general plan's land use designations. So these are the two zoning designations to correspond to the general plan amendment and the way the site plan, the site has been divided up by the extension of Third Street. You saw earlier, there was six, eight buildings on that site, each one of those is a lot, and to achieve that, they'll need to do, get an approval tonight for a tentative track map, and that's number 220381. And then lastly, the buildings, the landscaping, the signs, all the rest of the elements of the project are covered by your last motion tonight, which would be a precise plan of design that would approve the, the details of the site, so to speak, and we'll see some of those images on the next slides. General plan amendment. This shows, depicts how the site is currently laid out. That's what the left drawing shows, and then you can see how the site gets simplified into two halves by the extension of Third Street, and then the north side and the south side being created that will have their general land, their general plan land use designations. The zone change depicts pretty much the same item, the way, but these are zoning designations, and there's three of them on the left side that currently exist on that site. When you extend Third Street, you divide the site into two again, and then you have zoning designations that mirror or match or are consistent with the general plan's land use designations. So these are the, almost the same kind of images, but two different things. It's a little harder to see, but you probably could see on the bigger screen better than I do, and this is the tentative track map, number 20381. This shows how the site will be divided into the two on the north side of Third Street extension and the six lots on the south side of the Third Street extension. The, the way this is developed, the two largest buildings are on the two largest sites at the far back end of the site, and the six smaller buildings that are designed to be, you'll see in a minute, to be more campus-like in nature, smaller, those will be on the south side of the street, the three, with the six lots that are shown with their sizes. They're all about two to two and a half acres in size each, at least the ones on lots one through six. Sequel review, as you all know, is required, so we went through an extensive process beginning in 2021. There was an initial study that was prepared from January to February. There was an environmental impact report that followed from that, and that was prepared from 22 through 20, I mean, January 22 to February 22, including peer reviews from technical studies by another consulting firm, and the final EIR then was prepared and released in November of this year. In total, there were 69 comments that were received. Most of them were via email, so I don't know exactly where they all came from, but there were 69 of those, and they were responded to in the final EIR. And the EIR contains findings. There's significance impacts for air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and conflict with the air quality plan. Those impacts are basically emissions that would exceed South Coast, the South Coast Air Quality Management District thresholds of significance. Mitigation measures are required as conditions of approval to reduce these impacts to the maximum extent feasible. We'll have, we have a consultant here that could explain that a little more clearly for you and, and more thoroughly than I can at the moment. There's also a statement of overriding considerations to address significant impacts, and those are one of the things, these are the things you're going to be acting on the first motion later this evening. This is a prettier version of the site plan for buildings one through six. So this is the southern half of the development. These are the smaller buildings. They're divided with their building frontages, obviously facing the street. The interior of the site is where your parking is maximized in the middle there to serve all those different buildings. Each one of these buildings will have their own truck docks for the moment. They're secured by security fences internally, and there's parking there that's shared with like, there will be a owners association for the entire project to make sure that the, the grounds and the buildings and the other aspects of the project are maintained properly throughout its lifetime. This building elevation is, oh, I should mention too, that the project was purposely designed to have two, well, design is probably not the word, but it was divided to have two different architects working on the project. So the north half has one architect working on that with the larger buildings, and that's GAA Architects, and then the southern half, Herdman Design Group, developed the southern half that looks more campus-like, and this is what this, this picture depicts. This is building six, which would be on the actual corner of the northwest corner of, of Ramona and Mission. So the top view shows you what the building will look like for Mission Boulevard as you pass, heading east-west. The north, the second drawing in the middle is the rear side of that building, and you won't really see this from the street because this is the backside facing north, and the two bottom elevation drawings are what those side elevations, it would look like on the building on the east and on the west sides. So this is indicative of the architecture, sort of an Art Deco, nod to Art Deco design with, which was the intent here. These are different views of these buildings that would face Mission Boulevard. As you go ahead, east-west, these are the buildings and how they would stand out. You can see some of the landscaping that's there. This is pictorial, so it's not exactly how it'll look with the landscaping, but the buildings give you a feel for the ups and downs and the in and outs of the building walls themselves. Little closer view of, I think it's building six, as you would turn into it. I think the car's going the wrong way, so, on the wrong side, but, or maybe that's an interior shot. Which one is this one, Bridget? Okay, all right. In the business, that's called entourage, and sometimes you put it on the, yeah, I have to change the street, yeah. This is an interior view of the project, and it looks like it's looking south towards Mission, so if you're coming from the north and heading south, you would see what's in front of you going. So you can see the buildings are designed with a lot of architecture wrapping around the building, so you don't really get a whole lot of flat spots that you're, are not visible. I haven't been treating this. This is a view of the two buildings on the north side of the track. It's a bird's eye view of sorts, and you're looking southeast off of State Street. So you can see the size, and they're a little exaggerated because it is a perspective, so, but the important thing to notice is that it has articulation around the buildings, and the interior courtyard, which would be at the center of that, of the two buildings, is where the trucks will be, so you don't really, you won't see them as prominent elements of, of the building as it presents itself to the street. So a little closer up view, I think this is the building seven on Third Street, as if you were heading east, you would see this building with the corner here and regular parking on the side. Again, truck traffic would be a little bit further to the right side of the drawing and an interior court, so this gives you a feel of how the bigger building would look like. There is, it's complimentary to the design that was done for the south side, but they, but they are different. As you know, we had a public hearing on November 28th of this year, and during that meeting, we had 13 public comments that were received. 10 were done in person, and three were via Zoom. The planning commission, after taking public comment and commenting and with us on the project itself, unanimously recommended the city council approve the project. They approved resolutions 20, number 2022, number 22, 1971 through 1974, covering the various elements of the project I described earlier. And tonight, the planning commission is with the recommendations that the city council consider adopting these resolutions that are before you tonight. One is resolution number 223388, and this is for adopting environmental findings pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. The second resolution is number 223389, and that is to approve modifying the general plan land use designations of the 27.7 acres, as described previously in this presentation. And the third request tonight is to introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance number 23-1003, and this is to modify the zoning designation of the 27.74 acres again, as depicted it earlier in this report with the exhibits you saw. And if you approve that, then we're asking also that you set a public hearing for a second reading to consider the adoption of the same ordinance on Tuesday, January 17th of 2023. And then lastly, we're, again, we're, the planning commission and staff is asking you to consider adopting resolution number 223390, and this would be approving the tentative track map for the project and the precise plan of design for the site plan, floor plans, elevations, colors, and essentially the details for the project, as you saw there. I know I went there, I know I went kind of quickly through that, but we're here to answer any questions that you might have of that, of us, the architects, both architects are here, and the developers here as well as, including our environmental consultants. So with that, I conclude my presentation.
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, if I can add that there is a fiscal impact component that needs to be addressed with members of the city council, and that is that there is a community benefit fee that was negotiated with the developer in recognition of the fact that the Montclair community will lose a couple of important economic assets. One would be the four theater screens, as well as the swap meets that occur on that property. So as a result of that, the developer recognized that unless he generates the type of businesses at this particular property, there may or may not be a tax, sales tax component related to the operations of the various different buildings. So in that regard, in entering into this community benefit fee, the developer has agreed to contribute to the city a fee up to a maximum of $760,994.25 on an annual basis. That would continue until the second year, or the 10th year, at which point it would increase on a 2% per annum basis, and would continue to increase every year thereafter. The fee would go to the human services department for their operations, their different programs for the community. It could be used for a variety of, of different events. We will come back to the city council, get your input related to how you want those fees to be distributed. It could be used, for example, the online to college program. It could be used for various youth-related programs, including school-related programs, if that's the desire of the city council. There is a minor change to the condition. I put it in front of you on the dais, and you will see that under A1 of the community benefit fee. If you look halfway down, where it says furthermore, furthermore is in the very center of that paragraph under A1, I think that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 lines down, 11 or 12 lines down. Furthermore, for avoidance of doubt, if all buildings are fully leased and occupied, for, right now it says each year, the developer has requested that we change that to the entire year. Preceding the anniversary date, the resulting annual community benefit fee impact payment by the owner to city shall be based on 15 cents per square foot or $76,994.25 on an annual basis.
That would be condition number 16 of the resolution 3390.
All right, thank you. So I want to do now is I'm going to go ahead and start public comments again. The presentation is done. If, hopefully, those who wanted to speak on Zoom already raised their hands, or have already hit star nine on their phones, and I'm going to ask, Michael, maybe we'll, we'll start with the speakers with, who submitted the cards. We'll start there, and then we'll see who we have on Zoom from, after that.
Okay, I have three individuals asking to speak on this item. The first one would be Frankie Jimenez.
Hello, and just remind everybody, it is five minutes to speak. Hello, sir.
Pro Tem, council members, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to come out here and speak, especially during these holiday seasons. We know that right now, a lot of us, including myself, still have to go out there and do our Christmas shopping. But again, thank you so much. Once again, my name is Frankie Jimenez. I am president of Iron Workers Local 416. I'm also the business agent representing San Bernardino and Riverside Counties. We currently have over 3,500 members in our local organization, which a large, large number of them reside here in the island empire. I'm here in behalf of this project. This developer here sees the value in bringing to the table skilled craft labor by making sure that we also, too, in the same token, hire within our local communities. We have so many of our members that reside here in this community, but yet they're, they are being asked to drive 100 miles plus. This will definitely give us an opportunity to spend more time with our families. Also, the fact that this project right here, a total of eight structures, will definitely put a lot of our members to work. Hence the reason they could spend more time at home with their families, making sure that they could be a part of it. The number one thing that I've always, always hear at our union meetings is the fact that our members do not have no opportunity to spend with their family. They are that absentee parent, and the simple reason is because work. They're spending about at least four hours in commute, at least, and then they're working eight to 10 hours. By the time they get home, they're not there to take their children to the recitals, they're not there to take them to their softball games, and unfortunately, our children are the ones that become a part of the problem. If we are allowed to spend more quality time with them, we could be part of the solution, making sure that our community keeps prospering, moving forward, and the fact that this developer sees the value in skill train, making sure that this structure that we build, it's not only going to stand here for today, but for tomorrow. So once again, I'm here in behalf of this project, and I thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker.
Our second speaker is Mr. David Hanson.
Hello, sir, how you doing?
Very well, thank you. Evening, council members, Mayor Pro Tem. My name is David Hanson. I'm a representative of UA Local 398 Plumbers and Steamfitters. We are in support of this project. When we talk about industrial warehouses, most time we think about a big box. While those projects benefit our members, we recognize that those are, those projects that come across our radar every so often, such as this, they give us a sense of engagement in various sectors of the economy. Whether it's industrial medicine, or smaller distributors, or headquarters of a campus for a local manufacturer, the truth is, this project is a near perfect blend of skilled workers, local hire, and responsible contractors, economic diversity, and visionary architecture. 500,000-plus square feet of industrial space needs jobs for our members who construct the project, and eight buildings designed by two separate architects, including an open campus space, represents growth and diversity for the local economy, will become tenants afterwards. We're excited to get started on this project, and we ask you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Our last speaker is Mr. Jason Bayes. Hello, sir.
Hello, thank you. Honorable counsel, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jason Bayes, and I'm a proud member of Labor's International Union of North America, and I fully, we fully support this project. I'd like to make a couple points, one being, at one time, I was going to have a car stereo installed from the gents in the booth on the southeastern edge, but before I dished out that much money, I had to ask myself, is this really a good idea to spend this type of money with a swap meet vendor? No offense, but I said, you know, maybe I better just go to Best Buy. Now, for me, at this age, you know, the swap meet, the tiki, is more or less a place to buy cheap socks, t-shirts, and junk food, which we can go in three different directions and not go too far to Pomona, Ontario, and Chino to find the same thing. Now, with this other proposed grand establishment, I mean, it's going to be a job center for the community. It'll be in bicycle-riding distance at every single edge. It's going to have office spaces, it's going to have a diverse employment opportunity for the community, different types of employment. You know, we have students that need flexible hours, you know, elderly people who have to take a second job, unfortunately, and these types of establishments accommodate all those situations. Now, for us, construction workers, this is how we live. This is how we pay the bills, how we raise our babies, how we, how we keep the insurance going, and, you know, we need this. We go to these jobs, we prove ourselves, and the big boys take us to the next job. That's kind of how it goes, but it'll also open up the opportunity for local, new, young residents to come in, learn the trade, and go with us to the next job, which will enable them to buy a home here in Montclair and not have to move to Fontana and Harupa and all those other places everybody migrates eastward. So, in essence, this will be a fine establishment, a benefit for everyone, and of course, it'll bring in a tremendous amount of revenue, and, you know, every city has a honey-do list. This will help you guys get through that, it'll keep us working, it'll benefit everybody. Thank you so much. get through that. It'll keep us working. It'll benefit everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir.
That concludes our cards.
The cards, okay. Did we have everybody on Zoom that wishes to speak on Zoom? Hence, no one to hit star nine on the phone to speak. Okay, so we're gonna close the public hearing. I'm going to bring his manner back to the City Council. Looks like Mayor Protam Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple questions for staff, but first, I want to thank Mr. Jimenez, Mr. Hanson, and Mr. Baez for your comments. I can't imagine having to drive 100 miles to go to work. That'd just be nuts. But thank you for your comments. I appreciate you being here. I do have two questions for staff. One is pretty simple, and one might require some explanation. So the simple one first. At the planning commission, when this issue was before the planning commission, there was some discussion about adding some kind of art element. Did that, is that gonna happen, or that's not gonna happen?
Yeah, that did come up, and we have added it to the list of things, and I think it's in condition, one of the conditions of approval, I'll look it up in a minute, that added on to the existing ones we had there already. So there's a component of art that's being discussed as possibility for being included in the project, and it's something that we can continue to work through should you decide to approve this project tonight. It was kind of hard to do on the fly to design art, I think, so we were aware of it, and we're willing to work with the applicant, the AR2, to come up with something that would be satisfactory for all.
Excellent, thank you. And then my last question was about part of your report. When you talked about CEQA and the potential impacts, but I think I missed part of it. So can you tell us what those impacts were and how they're being mitigated?
I would, if I could, if you don't mind, if I can call up the CEQA consultant, because he can do a better job of explaining that to me than I can. This is Mr. Patrick Cruz from DUDIC.
Mr. Patrick Cruz.
Hello, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Patrick Cruz. I'm a project manager with DUDIC, and we prepared the EIR and the associated technical studies. And so, the EIR found that the project would result in significant impacts with regard to four resource topics. They were air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, sorry, three topics, and land use and planning. And so, to just briefly summarize each of those in a phrase or two, with regard to air quality, the project would result in the generation of emissions of a criteria air pollutant that would exceed the thresholds of significance by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. And so, by extension, because it would result in the exceedance of a threshold, it would also conflict with an air quality plan as well. So those are two air quality impacts. With regard to greenhouse gas emissions, the project would result in the generation of emissions above air quality management district thresholds. And then by association, it would also potentially result in the potential to exceed or to inhibit attaining state greenhouse gas reduction goals. And then the last one with land use and planning, because we had conflict with plans in earlier impact scenarios, we also have a land use and planning conflict. So in essence, we essentially have two impacts. One is the generation of air pollutants that are above thresholds, and same with greenhouse gas emissions. And I'd like to note that it's important to note that the thresholds that were applied were static and bright-line thresholds. So they do not scale with the size of a project, and because this is a large site at 28 acres and a large project in general, we knew that we were gonna have these impacts, you know, really from the beginning, just by way of the nature of these thresholds. With that being said, however, there are several mitigation measures that will be required of the project. There are a number of them that speak to energy efficiency, low water usage, those types of things, and meeting the, and being a state-of-the-art facility with regard to energy usage and those types of things. And then in addition, we also, there are also mitigation measures that speak to reducing air pollutant generation and greenhouse gas emissions, such as placing idling, time limits on the amount that trucks can idle for, requiring that trucks use specific truck routes so that they avoid residential areas to the maximum extent practical. And then in addition, providing electric vehicle charging stations for passenger vehicles, making sure that the project site or that the buildings are outfitted with roof structures that can accommodate solar installation in the future. And then moreover, also pre-wiring the project site so that it will, that electric vehicle charging stations for heavy-duty trucks can be installed on the site in the future in anticipation of a transition to electric vehicles. So there are several of those that are available and that have been applied to the project. And then, as Mr. Diaz pointed out, CEQA provides that when a project would result in a significant and unavoidable impact, that a decision-making body can still approve a project if it finds that the approval of the project would result in specific social, legal, or economic benefits that outweigh the effects of the, or the environmental effects of the project. And so in this case, a statement of overriding considerations was prepared and included in the staff report as Exhibit B. And those speak to, I believe it's Exhibit B, as a specific attachment, and those speak to the economic benefits of the project, providing jobs and creating a tax generating use, resulting in a cohesive and unified high-quality business park environment, providing capital benefits to the city, and in others that you would typically assume with a development of this size and nature. And I'll be around if you have any other questions, and I hope that that answered them.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Real quick, the land use conflicts are being resolved partly by tonight's actions. So the inconsistencies between zoning and general plan would be remedied by actions tonight?
Correct, exactly, with the general plan and zone change, because it's a, for lack of a better word, a hodgepodge of different general plan and zoning designations. The proposed general plan amendment and zone change would alleviate those conflicts and result in a cohesive land use district kind of throughout the Mission Boulevard corridor.
Great, thank you. How about Councilmember Rue?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, one of the questions I had was already answered. A question that's minor is, why did the developer choose two different architects? I mean, it looks fairly cohesive, but why did they choose two architects?
I can let him answer in a minute, but I think that when, early on, when we, when the developer purchased the property, one way of developing the property was sort of conventional model, build as big, one big, huge building, or as many different big buildings that you could fit on there. And we consciously worked with them to encourage them to develop a more campus-like facility, and to do something that was, that would present well to the Mission Boulevard street scape, and make improvements in that regard, too. So it was an effort to kind of divide the project into a bigger half, and then the smaller half, where the property would relate better to the street. I don't know if that's a good, okay, summary of why they decided to do this. And the two architects just made it a little more interesting to have the two different work on.
Then, I do want to thank our friends with the unions for showing up tonight. I recently was able to, I had, not regarding this project, just getting together socially with a friend of mine, Jimmy Elrod with the carpenters. And he also tells me the same story about his members driving four, five hours just to job site, in some cases, having to stay overnight nearby, because there aren't enough jobs here in the Inland Empire and the San Gabriel Valley, which, that's pretty much our homes. You might live in Laverne, you might live in Fontana, but you're, that's our region. And in the ensuing weeks, in the different socials going on just before the holidays, a friend of mine with the Bricklayers, who's going to be retiring at the end of the year, he said, one of the projects he's been working on was in the city, is in the city of Irvine, and he's having to get up at 3:00 in the morning, he's with the Bricklayers, to do that job. And he's highly experienced, really good guy. I mean, I trust him with my life. And that really, it said something to me, that we need these better jobs in our region. We need these good jobs here at home. We need your skills. We need a lot more vocational ed. In fact, just the other day, I was talking to a friend of mine on the Chaffey College Board about some things with vocational ed and the need for them. And these are good jobs, these are well-paying jobs that come back to our community. These are the workers who, as you said, buy the home. They shop at our grocery stores, they shop at our retail stores, in our restaurants. They're paying sales tax, their kids go to school, and if the job is closer to home, they can be closer to home. I know with Jimmy, he told me some of his members are commuting down to the Long Beach area, and then back up here where they live, and it's not always a great thing to do. So again, they wind up staying overnight. I appreciate your being forward on this tonight, telling us how you feel, because your jobs are important. I know recently, and because, what I do for a living, I do government affairs in the real estate industry, so I deal with a lot of public policy, commercial, industrial, residential. And I talked to Jeff Mottahano with the BIA, and he was telling me how even some of their members, the developers, are struggling to find the people who can do the work that are nearby, because they have to come in. And he said, in one case, they had to bring in some folks from Las Vegas to do the job, because there just weren't enough skilled workers here. So thank you for what you're doing with your skills. And that was about it. I think the architecture looks good. I, too, remember when it was the Mission tiki drive-in, as I remember the Valley drive-in. And I remember the days of, with my family, we didn't have a lot of money, going to see a movie at the Mission or the Valley, and that was our entertainment, probably for two months, because my mother would have had to save that long to do that. And I have great memories there, but like all things, things change, uses change. I can also remember when the street I grew up on, I don't remember, but I have the photos of it, when Palo Verde Street was a dirt road, and where Costco is now was a chicken ranch, and my mother had those photos. And so, things change, times change, and this is a positive use for our community. We're going, I've looked at what the jobs will be, it's fantastic. So, that's all I have to say. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the item, unless there are the questions.
Let's get through the questions first, and then you make a motion. Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cruz, real quickly, a question for you. You said one of the mitigating conditions was to provide electric vehicle charging stations for public use at the property.
Yes, and so I should clarify, those are for occupant, sorry, tenants, workers at the site. And I believe it exceeds those requirements of just the California Building Code requirements, and I believe it would be 10% of parking spaces would be equipped with quick charge, level-two chargers.
Okay, you answered that, because I was wondering if they were for public use. Could anybody just drive in, knowing that they're there, hook up, wait a while, and leave? And that's what I kind of didn't want.
Right, exactly. And so they would be exclusively for the use of workers and tenants.
Okay, thank you, sir. Question to staff. In all of the material we were given on this item, which is probably the most I've ever had in my two years being on this council, I didn't see anything about a local hiring requirement. Is there a stipulation or an agreement from the developer and the city on, for a local hiring requirement for any of the tenants that will occupy the buildings?
That's an agreement that they made between the private parties, so that's already been taken care of.
Perfect, great. Mr. Hanson, real quickly, you represent the Union 398, the Plumbers and Steam Fighters, Steam Fitters Union. How many members locally in your chapter? 90? That's good to hear. And then I'm assuming, based on the comments from my colleague, Mr. Rue, and from Mr. Baez, Mr. Baez made a comment that this would be a good place for folks to learn the trade and go to our next job. Perhaps maybe Mr. Baez can answer, or staff can answer. Is the assumption, is it safe to say the assumption is that these buildings would be occupied by folks that would predominantly be involved in trade and vocational businesses only?
Meaning the eventual users? Well, the zoning would allow for a range of different kinds of users. We don't know who they would be at this point in time, so they could be manufacturing facilities that do all their work in town and have an employee base, or they could be perhaps some kind of office professional users, or, so there's a number of different ones. The larger warehouse buildings could be a draw, like the one we have on Arrow Highway with the medical pharmaceutical business. So you just never know. At this point, we don't know.
Okay. I chuckled at the comment about the swap meet and it being a good place to find junk food. And actually, the comment brought back some memories, actually, of a kid, of being a kid and going to the place and eating the junk food, and attending movies in the summer with my parents and family, where we would, my parents would load up the back of our yellow Toyota, I don't know what year it is, it was the 80s. And we would sometimes, I think, take the dog and watch movies, and I'd fall asleep there in the movie. And before I know it, I was being hauled off to home and to bed. I am a little bit surprised that when this issue was first brought to light a year ago, and public input was being requested, and it's actually been going on for longer than a year, that there were individuals and residents who objected to the project. And I'm a little bit caught off guard that they're not here tonight. I really thought that they were going to be, either they were gonna be in person or via Zoom. I am hoping that is a good sign that their concerns are put to bed, and their issues have been since resolved. I do know, and I want to bring up one resident that I have been in contact with, and she's actually not a resident, but nonetheless, she definitely cares about the city, and that's Karen Stewart, who was very adamant about preserving some of the artifacts, if you will, or the items in the tiki for nostalgia's sake and to preserve them. And she had mentioned to me that we do not have, like other cities do, a preservation society or some type of history organization to document Montclair's founding, you know, its early beginnings before its city, its current city status, and future going forward. And I'm glad that the owners of the tiki were, agreed to give her whatever she wants to take from there to preserve. And that put me at ease, because I've always been one for nostalgia, and it is kind of hard for me, since I've been here all my life, to kind of let go of things. But I also got to realize that there's time, times change, and things move forward, and who am I to impede the progress of a site? Someone had asked me if I was going to vote no on this project, and I honestly told them I wasn't sure, because I have traditionally taken the position that private entities and individuals that own property can do whatever they want with their property, so long as it's not to the detriment of those around them. And who am I, as now a government official, to impede that progress or impede that from happening? I know folks don't want this. I know they want the benefit of the drive-in theater. And for the sake, I know some arguments have been made that low-income families, that is an option for them to go. It was occupied at its height during COVID, when everybody couldn't go indoors, they went outdoors, and we utilized that benefit to the max during the COVID years. It's gonna hurt to see that land no longer being used for at least, in my 46 years of living, that has always been that. And it'll be different to see. But I'm pleased hearing the, how the plans came out, I'm pleased to see the design. I would hope that the majority of the uses would be to the benefit of trade unions and individuals going into trades and vocational training, because college isn't for everybody. It is for some, but those that just can't make it, there's no shame in learning a trade and making a living off of a trade. And shame on those who would put some cast aspersions on those that are involved in such a living, because they are making ends meet. I do have another question. Mr. Diaz, it is on your site plan, Buildings 1 through 6 page. You had stated, and I was gonna ask the question before, I was gonna interject and ask, you stated that the entrances would be facing outwardly, is that what you, what I understood? Is it gonna be facing Third Street and Mission, or are the face of each building going to be facing the internal courtyard?
No, the face of the building will be outward towards the streets. The interior areas have some architecture that wraps around the buildings, but the interiors are where the backside of the buildings are, and some of the truck areas and loading areas. So they're out of view generally from the street views. But what you see on the street is intentional to be But what you see on the street is intentional to be designed and appeal to anybody who's interested in looking at the buildings. And that's what I showed you with Building Number 6 as the typical example of what those buildings look like.
Okay. Thank you for that. GA Architects is developing or designing the two buildings in the north?
That's correct.
And did I, did I hear you say it was Herndon that was developed?
Ms. Herdman, it's Herdman and Associates. Herdman Architecture. And she's here tonight.
I just wanted the name for my benefit. And then a question to the city manager. Well, a general statement first and then question that ties in. The buildings look nice. And I'm sure they're going to be pristine when their, when it's ribbon cutting is done and the building's up and open for business and to be occupied. My concern is, given some of the issues we have regarding blight, drug use, potential homeless individuals, huge graffiti issues, that's prevalent on the southwest corner of the existing corner. How are we going to prevent this complex of buildings to suffer the same fate as the southwest portion is, to a lesser extent, the southeast portion is? And my concern also is nighttime. What is going to be done to maintain the property at night to deter any crime of various kinds on the property? Because there is a building, a complex of, on, oh dear God, I want to say Mission, close to the tacos Los Cernales area, that at night, it's more or less blackened and very poorly lit. And there have been calls of questionable activity in that little complex. And I would not want to see this area suffer that fate. So what is going to be done with respect to that issue?
Well, I think as, and Mr. Diaz can certainly pipe in. But I think as indicated in the agenda report and in the conditions, certainly lighting requirements are imposed on the developer for the entire site as well as graffiti treatment on the various walls. There's also gate systems that control access to the property, not perhaps every section of the property, but certainly in major areas of the property. The developer itself or the tenants are required to maintain landscaping, maintain graffiti abatement-related issues, and otherwise address the appearance of the property. In fact, I think the agenda report also indicates that the tenants will be required to enter into an agreement with each other, that they will maintain the property to the specifications indicated in the conditions. So I think with all of these measures that are identified in the various conditions, we hope and believe that all of those issues will be addressed. In addition to that, we are enhancing our code enforcement program right now and adding additional code enforcement officers. So that will be a major impact throughout the community as we continue to struggle and address all of these issues.
And if I may add, Conditions Number 15 require the formation of an owners' association that would do just what the city manager was indicating about maintaining the properties and protecting them. They, one of those requirements is to hire a certified professional management company that would take on the burden of organizing all those group members together to make sure that they're following the rules. The CCNRs that are being prepared for them or will be prepared for them to, for all of the members or the owners of the properties to follow. And then lastly, Condition Number 70, 170 through 173 are police department conditions. One of those is for the requirement to prepare a security plan that they would go over with them. And that includes the installation of security camera systems, which is pretty standard condition now these days on all of our new projects where they do a better job of having to monitor what goes on at all hours. But it'll be more lit. It'll be probably less densely landscaped. So it creates places to, you know, allow for some things to happen that currently happen. But overall, it'll be a positive improvement altogether on that site. And it'll look completely different from what it is today, at least on the outside edges.
And just finally, regarding the community benefit fee. Mr. City Manager, you stated that those funds would be given to the Human Services Department. Why is it solely the Human Services Department to be the benefactor of those funds when code enforcement and likely police and fire will be responding to the property for a variety of issues? And no doubt, those departments would, the demand for increased need for them on the property would probably drain those budgets as well.
Well, this is the interest and intent of the developer, that the community benefit funds go for these sorts of purposes as opposed to regular governmental services that the city provides. The monies won't exactly go to the Human Services Department. They go to the Community Benefit Foundation for the benefit of the community. That's what the condition is. That's what the developer wanted it to do. And as it relates to police and fire services, the taxes paid through property taxes, as well as hopefully sales tax generation from the site, will contribute to the city's general fund, offsetting the costs related to police and fire-related services.
Well, I appreciate the explanation. I just, I just wish it wasn't solely agreed to, that it would go to Human Services and it would be going to the other departments as well that would no doubt respond to items at the property.
The mayor and council members.
I'm sorry, John.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, repeat your name, please. Go ahead.
John Atwell. Yes. Yeah, I think it was really kind of a combination of, we had heard that the city wanted this for youth. And that's what we were kind of focusing on. You know, we're open to whatever makes the most sense, you know? So whatever makes sense to you guys, we want to do what's best for the community.
Well, I was done until you made that statement, sir. Question to staff then. Which staff determined that we wanted these funds for youth? Because we had a discussion as council regarding the funds or monies to be gathered from marijuana establishments to use that to benefit youth and nonprofit organizations in the city.
Right, well, when I stepped into the discussions related to the community benefit fee for this particular project, it was never expressed to me otherwise. It was only to be for community benefits related to youth operations, youth programs, online to college. If there was ever a discussion related to other types of programs, I'm not aware of that. I don't believe that there's a community facilities district related to this project, is there? So the community facilities district would require that funds go to police and fire as well as public works-related issues. But because there is no CFD related to this particular site, that is not the option. But other than that, it was expressed to me that this was the intent. If the council wants the monies to go to other things, as I indicated during my comments related to the fiscal impact, this is coming back to the city council anyway, for the city council to indicate to us how they want the funds distributed. The intent of the condition is that it would be for youth-related programs, online to college, school-related programs. We have control of that. That's only a recommendation in the condition. And if the city council desires that the monies be diverse in a more broad way, that would be up to the council when we bring this back for council consideration as to how they want the monies dispersed.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for your time and your explanation. Thank you, Mr. Diaz, and thank you, Mr. Starr. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I have a few comments and some questions, but I'll try to be brief. First, I want to commend the owners of the Mission Tiki and the new owners in working together during COVID to keep the Mission Tiki operations going for a few years for the benefit of our community. That was fantastic. At one point, that was the only thing that anyone in our community was even able to do with their family. So what an amazing thing for both entities to come together and do. I do see quite a bit of value to the community in this type of business park. And on top of bringing in businesses, allowing for more jobs in our community, I hope that this would also lead to more development in that same area to cater to this new business park and the new development, new workers. And we have existing restaurants. I would love to see more shopping centers, more things develop down there. We've been doing a great job, I think, in developing the south part, but our residents want more. So I hope that this will contribute to that. I hope that because we have workers here, we're also going to need shopping centers for them. We're going to need restaurants for them. I share in the same concerns as our residents when it comes to the environmental impacts and the loss of community gathering places. That's a huge concern for me. And I am grateful that the new owners have considered adding in artistic elements, cooperating with the city and providing a safe bike travel path to connect to other projects that the city is working on, like the Creek Trail, that sort of thing. And making it a nice and safe place for our residents to walk through. And maybe in the future, you know, we could consider, maybe if the owners want to, consider a park or some sort of gathering place where people can walk through and enjoy a swing set, you know, on their way to the San Antonio Creek Trail. But of course, that's not up to us, it's entirely up to you. I have some questions as far as, and I appreciate the community benefit fee, too. I think that will help offset some of the concerns by the community. It will contribute value to our city. And one of my questions regarding the community benefit fee is, I understand that Mission is designated as a truck travel street. And I might not be using the appropriate words. But will the additional trucks that are going to be coming in and out as a result of this project and the impact of those trucks to our streets be offset by that community benefit fee? That's one of my questions.
Do you want us to take the questions one at a time?
Yeah, why don't you do that because I have a few.
Okay, well, I think that would have been addressed in the SEQA analysis as to the impacts that the trucks would have had on the environment. And any impacts would have been mitigated through the process going through the environmental review. So there is no association between the community benefit fee and the trucks that will be generated in this particular area. And our consultant may want to address this matter further. But every effort was made to minimize the impact of trucks in the area. The agenda report, as well as the conditions, indicate that the trucks that will be operating for this facility, for the most part, will be designed to use non-diesel fuels, which would mean less pollution coming from the particular vehicles that will be serving this particular project, not necessarily meaning that they'll be migrating to electric. But certainly, State of California is mandating that by 2040, that would be a reality in the state anyway for all new purchases after that point in time. But I do believe that the effort to mitigate that particular concern has been successfully achieved by the mitigation measures through the SEQA analysis.
Thank you.
If I may?
Sure.
Yes, so the truck, the city has truck routes that the project would be required to comply with. And trucks would primarily be routed down on Ramona to the 60. However, that's not, while it's an important planning consideration, it wasn't necessarily addressed specifically in the SEQA document. Nonetheless, though, the way that that's addressed through a planning perspective is, you know, generation of taxes over time, property taxes, that are contributed to the city's general fund. And then the city's planning capital improvements program, which is updated on an annual basis, would take into account the improvements that are necessary over a period of time to address pavement rehabilitation and those sorts of things. So yes, it would be considered. And then by way of the truck using established truck routes, there would be a, you know, plans for additional maintenance and rehabilitation over time.
And my other questions might be appropriately addressed to you, Mr. Cruz. One of them, I just want to make sure I understand correctly. But notwithstanding the mitigation efforts, do I understand it correctly that there will still be significant impacts?
Yes, you are. So the, as I mentioned earlier, the project would result in significant unavoidable impacts. And so when we evaluate impacts with SEQA, there are several different tiers that we characterize impacts as no impact, less than significant impact, less than significant impact with mitigation, and significant and unavoidable. And so for the air quality and greenhouse gas emission impacts, like I said, we applied those with regard to regional, sorry, with regard to thresholds of significance from the South Coast Air Quality Management District. For greenhouse gas emissions, for example, the threshold was 3,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. I know I'm kind of getting a little into the details here. And the project would result in the generation of 14,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. As I mentioned, those thresholds don't scale linearly to the size of the project. And so we can reduce emissions to the maximum extent feasible by way of the mitigation measures. However, we couldn't get those reductions down to below a level of significance, below that specified threshold. I also neglected to mention earlier that the project evaluated the addition of the project as if it, as if the project site were a blank slate, a greenfield development. We had initially, when we started the project in 2019, I want to say, had initially anticipated evaluating the net change in operations from the site, a fully functional drive-in movie theater that generated trips on a daily basis, right? Eventually, by the time that we really started the analysis in earnest, we knew that the drive-in theater was winding down and we hadn't yet COVID yet. And that the drive-in movie theater was operating at, you know, a substantially less percentage than what it was initially. And so given that information, we didn't want to fully assume that the drive-in was fully operational or that it was, so that we're telling a better story. So we decided to be conservative and just assume that there was nothing going on and then that were, any delta there was fully from the project. Of course, COVID hit. The drive-in was operating at maximum, at maximum capacity. And we were thinking, oh, man, we wish we, you know, went back and captured what was going on. However, we, you know, we were past that point and would have had to rerun substantial amounts of modeling, et cetera. And we didn't go down that approach, which is still, again, a conservative approach. So to your earlier question, though, yes, the project would result in significant unavoidable impacts. However, it's important to note that those are impacts that are occurring on a regional scale. For air quality, the impact is essentially impeding the South Coast Air Quality Management Basin ability to, essentially how to, how many days would the... So the thresholds were adopted with the intent of saying every project that's below this threshold would not impede the air basin's ability to have bad air quality days. Projects that would exceed that threshold could potentially result in additional bad air quality days. However, the science is still kind of out and it's impossible. Well, it's very difficult to quantify exactly how many that would be because of meteorological changes and that type of thing. And again, it doesn't scale linearly to projects. So with those limitations, we were forced to consider the impact significant and unavoidable. But it would be occurring on a regional scale, as well as for greenhouse gas emissions, again, on a regional scale.
So that partially answers what my next question was going to be, which is, is there any way to determine had this, you know, become a shopping center, for instance, would there be the same level of significant impacts on the environment in that instance? Or are the significant impacts solely because of the nature of the development?
Yes, so the EIR did include an alternatives analysis, kind of a range of alternatives, everything from shopping centers to residential uses. And they were each evaluated, one on their feasibility and then two... and then two, their potential environmental impacts. Shopping centers generally generate large amounts of traffic. That would more or less likely be similar to the proposed project. We didn't, you know, go into modeling, you know, every conceivable hypothetical project, but it is likely that a project of that scale, given the size of this project site, would likely result in significant impacts.
Okay, that... Those are all my questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you.
Okay, Ben, do you have any more questions?
Yeah, just to follow... Sure, please. The opponent have a couple of questions regarding the statement. You had stated that trucks would be encouraged to go down Ramona to the 60. Now, is... Just two quick questions related to that. From Mission down to the 60, one, was the City of Chino consulted with respect to this project?
The city... I don't believe the City of Chino was consulted. I believe that the... That they were sent all of the environmental notices, starting from the notice of preparation to the notice of availability of the draft EIR and then notice of availability of the final EIR. The transportation impact assessment was prepared consistent with the Public Works Department and City Engineering Department. And no further consultation was conducted or brought up during the process.
And not a letter of objection from the City of Chino?
Correct.
Okay. And then so, is the route then to... Is it safe to say the route then is to be predominantly coming from the south to this establishment? And nothing is to be encouraged to come from the 10 freeway? Because right now, the 10 freeway, there is no commercial traffic like... Or industrial traffic, rather, southbound on Montevista from the 10. Is... So is the 60 then going to be the main source of heavy truckloads coming to this establishment and exiting off Montevista or Ramona?
So that's a great question. And sure thing, I'll pass this one up here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam and council members, everyone here tonight. Yeah, there... The traffic impact analysis, from what I recall, allows trucks to go through Central from the 10 freeway, as well as the 10... The 60, I'm sorry. So they come from both directions. And there's no impacts to our signals specifically at the Dale and Ramona intersection. So there's really not a lot... Not... No truck impacts. And we... But we really don't know until we know what the uses are of the proposed buildings.
Well, I specifically mentioned Montevista, not Central, because I am aware of that allowance on Central. My concern is, since there's no exit off the 10 for Ramona, as there is on the 60, the 60 would be ideal for them to come through, although I'm sure Chino may not like it once it's up and running. However, my concern is, though, that there's no exit of Ramona on the 10, therefore, they're going to likely hit Montevista before they hit Central. And I would hope they wouldn't, because that isn't allowed. Because that would be the next logical main thoroughfare to get to Ramona and Mission.
Well, our truck routes are on Ramona on... And also on Mission Hold. I didn't have... Thought I had a map here, but... So yeah, I mean, technically, they will be using the 60 probably more because of our truck routes. But Central is also a truck route. And they can get through that through State Street. If I don't... If I recall, that's also a truck route.
Yeah, but the primary truck routes through the city are Central Avenue and Mission... Down there, Mission, and goes east-west, and then Central Avenue goes north-south. And those are likely the most... The sources of where these trucks may come and go. The other thing to import, remember, is that all industrial uses aren't the same. And some businesses... There's a 70,000 square foot building at the northwest-east corner of a new building at Montevista and... By the fire station, at Montevista and Mission. And he's probably got three trucks that... And four people that work in that big building. So you just never really quite know what it is that is going to be in there. But for the most part, we... The truck traffic in our city is fairly moderate, coming from our businesses coming and going.
All right, I just... To the owner and the future tenants, please encourage your clientele not to use Montevista as a main thoroughfare by default, please.
We can't.
Well, yeah. It's not a truck route.
Understand that, but for someone that doesn't know the area, they just might accidentally hop on.
Right. I do also want to point out that the city has contributed its fair share to the interchange upgrades at Central Avenue and the 60 freeway, per agreement with the City of Chino and San Bruno County Transportation Authority. That contribution is for the very purpose of allowing traffic flowing from Montclair into Chino for the purposes of accessing the 60 freeway.
That's good to know. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Mike, a question real fast. You talk about users of these buildings. This could be one large building, maybe 600,000 square feet?
Which one?
This site.
Well, the total site is 500,000 with all buildings.
Right, but...
The top buildings...
A developer could have come in and said, I want to construct one large warehouse building of, what, maybe 600,000 square feet?
Oh, yeah, we did have when... When the early... Before the... The applicant purchased the property, we had a number of bidders that came in and wanted to do just that, one or two buildings.
One large building, 600,000 square feet? That probably would attract a lot more trucks?
That's correct.
Trailers?
And we purposely didn't want that, so we... Luckily, we didn't get any of those buyers.
But this proposed plan actually provides different opportunity of users there.
Yeah, it gives you a little more diversity and a little chance to attract different users that could use those buildings.
And why not commercial or residential on the site?
Well, it's not a retail zone, right? But there's some... What do you call it? You can do some retail, but it's primarily incented for some sort of an industrial and/or a service user that could take over the buildings and use them. And at one point, I mean, even with the condition, I think, right now under code, you could even do a campus, a medical facility, or something like that.
Right.
So there's a... It was intentionally, especially for the south side with the smaller lots, was to allow for diversity of potential business users that could come.
This is basically look a little more unique than your typical warehouse site that we see build.
That is. That's correct. Which is the predominant pattern if you go east from here and south.
Right, east of the airport to further east. Rialto, Fontana, et cetera. And then again, my other question is, this site, why can't we just zone the site residential, commercial?
Good, but it just... You'd have to go through this whole process again to determine environmental impacts to the people who are going to be living there, and they'd be surrounded by...
And does that make sense as your...
We...
Expertise as a planner?
Well, in the process of before the buyers and even when the tiki's wasn't for sale, a number of people approached us with a bunch of different proposals to do things. Some of them were residential in character, but they didn't seem to fit quite nicely next to the railroad by the other industrial users that are around them. And so it never really materialized. So we had a bunch of options, but this was the one that made it the farthest, obviously, tonight.
Third Street. Because Third Street's going to open up now, all the way to Ramona. And so just to let everybody know, there are improvements being done at Third Street. We're doing the first 200 feet, 300 feet. There are some residences on Third Street. We're gonna... There's an overlay of asphalt for Third Street and also for Silicon.
Yeah, the improvements... Well, Chris, Third Street will go through the middle of the site and connect directly to Ramona Avenue. The applicant, by condition, is required to do for the first 175 feet, I think, west of that site to the county road with curb gutter and all the things that need to be there, because there aren't any. There isn't... None of those improvements are there. Beyond that, all the way to Silicon, he's agreed to share the cost with the city in making the improvements to that, primarily to the surface pavement of the roadway and maybe fill in... Helping with filling in a couple of spots. But it's pretty much curb and gutter already there. And as you mentioned, there's a few little houses that are directly adjacent and then further down the street closer to Silicon. But the predominant use of that area is for industrial.
Right. And are we going to allow large trucks, 16-wheelers, to be on Third Street?
It's not a truck route to go west.
So that would have to go to Ramona or Mission or State?
And I don't know why they would go west, because it's just as easily to go to the signal and get covered movements with the signals that allow them to move.
All right. And then just go back to revenue. John, if you have a... The developer, if the county assesss or values this property after it's built, what's... What do you estimate to be the worth of the property? I know it's six different or eight different parcels, but do you have any idea what the value could be, an estimate?
Well, the smaller buildings will probably be worth $400 a foot.
Okay.
And the bigger buildings, 250, 300.
Well, overall, what do you think the total value of just... Just a snapshot in your head real fast?
See. Can I use a calculator?
Yeah, go ahead. Why he's doing that? I know the planning commission had conditions. As Mayor Protam, John's raised, and we will incorporate the enhancements there at Ramona and Central. We talked about that.
Right. 14 of the last resolution for the PPD includes the original comments that were put in there when the planning commission looked at it and the additional comments that they had.
Right. And I want to emphasize, it's really important that we have something stands out on that intersection especially, at Ramona and Mission.
And we've been in contact with the developer and the architect, so we're all thinking, putting our heads together to come up with something that would be appropriate and meet the objectives that we're trying to hit.
Okay. All right. I know John is still trying to calculate that number. And I... What I wanted to show you is how much property taxes this property would generate. The first year, of course, Prop 13 will curtail that for future value increase. You also get a utility use tax. Am I correct, Ed? The utility use taxes? There'd be a revenue and also hopefully we'll get some sales taxes off the property here. But I was trying to let you know what the property taxes will be, but I think for the amount of time, we'll get moving in when he's done. So... Okay, so are there any more comments on this? And I apologize, John.
No, no problem.
So we're going to do you a favor right now. So if not, let's get a motion for approval here. So Diane, do we need one motion for each resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Do we need a motion for each item here? Or can you make one motion that does... That incorporates everything?
You can do it either way.
So Councilmember Rue, if you can make a motion?
A motion that incorporates everything included here this evening.
Okay, and we'll just clarify that. Adoption of Resolution Number 22-3388.
22-3389.
Which is the ordinance? And that's the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so we have everything in order for the motion. It's been seconded by Councilmember Johnson. And let's... I'm sorry? Councilmember Lopez, excuse me. Did I just insult you?
No.
Oh, okay, just want to make sure.
She shook her head and I just said, no, it was...
Okay, and then roll call vote. Well, you need... Do you have to read the number and title, because we have a first reading?
He can do that after the motion. But we should clarify that the motion includes that the ordinance be read by title and number only for the reading.
That it be read by title and number only.
Okay.
Hey, you want to incorporate the changes to Condition Number 16?
And then the makers and second maker of the motion incorporate the change to Number 16, which is the one that Ed talked about the entire...
Yes.
Okay, there's that. And did we miss anything else, Diane? Do we have everything covered? Okay. All right, let's do roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Lopez? Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Rue?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you. And Mayor Dutre?
Aye. So that is adopted, five to zero. Congratulations. What I'm going to do is take a five-minute break. You all okay with that? All right, we'll reconvene at 8:50.
Oh, yeah, he was anxious.
I'll just talk to John.
All right, thank you, sir.
Congrats.
Four-year-old. Out on the windows, twice.
I'm glad you saw him.
Oh, please, this is a little. Was sitting off to his.
Oh, well, I'll let him know.
Thank you so much.
It's recycling, I don't even turn that.
I'm freezing.
Oh, and I worked in reality earlier, but we left for it.
But I like, I don't like these, I like these because it's. I accept its loss. I like to print out and read.
All right, we'll get started with the city council meeting. And I just want to let you, let you note the developer, he gave back to me, so he estimates the, the property taxes, the first full year will be about two million a year. We'll get fourteen percent of that, so Moncler will get about $280,000 in property taxes once fully developed and occupied. And I just want to note that a resident, I forgot to say this, wanted to let me mention the history of Moncler Theaters, Mission Tiki, of course, we just discussed that, but he wanted to pinpoint that at one point, Moncler had five theaters, obviously the Valley, the Moncler, the Moncler Theater on Holt, the theater, the Moncler, the theater at the Plaza, where the.
Where Esporta.
UA six has been the, the fifth one there. So at one point, we had five, and we're going to go back to one now, so, the newest one. Okay, so we're on consent calendar of the agenda. Got quite a few items. So I'll start with my left. Anybody on my left want to pull a consent calendar item?
It's on for me, Mr. Mayor.
Something on my left?
Okay, how about my right?
Finding my page. For purposes of comment predominantly, not to have elaborate discussions, B ten.
B ten, okay.
C one, C three.
Okay, C one. C one is regarding the, okay. C three? C three, okay.
Yes. C six, D two.
C what?
C six, D two.
C six and D two, okay. All right, why don't you start with the ones you want to comment on? Just your short comments on, which sounds like B tens are one of them.
Item B ten, this would be the item that would begin the process for the city to install one-hundred-and-sixty-three, if I'm correct, on the staff report, flashing stop signs throughout the city at deemed critically important stop signs intersections within the city. I believe this is also part of. Am I on the right item? Am I?
Yeah, flashing stop signs.
Okay. This is part of the Safe Routes to Schools effort that many residents have raised and was important to them ever since we've had an unfortunate incident near Vernon Middle School and other schools in, in the city. I applaud staff for bringing this item to council. I appreciate the fact that we are going to basically light up the city, literally, with stop signs at nearly almost from north to south, actually, yeah, every part of the city is going to have flashing stop signs, which is unheard of in the region. Perhaps that'll become Moncler's moniker, but nonetheless, I appreciate staff doing so, and I look forward to seeing them being put up, so thank you.
And I will concur as well. So what other comments, items do you have here? Just, just comments only? No questions, comments.
If I understood, item C one.
C one you have a comment on?
Yes, we are just, just clarification, we're just allocating eight-hundred-and-ninety, maybe nine-hundred thousand totally, just for going out to bid for design purposes, correct?
Yes, at this point in time, that is what this is about.
Okay.
Yeah, and, 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 and item C one, I just want to preface, this is to go out to design. There'll be a study to be done. Obviously, one study to be done is between Benito and San Bernardino, is how do you deal with single lanes, or should be expanded? I understand options will be provided to council for consideration. So before they go out for construction bids, this will come back to the council for discussion in regards to the recommendations from the, the design. So that's C one.
Well, Mr. Mayor, real quickly, you piqued my interest then again with respect to this item. Mr. City Manager, from San Bernardino to Benito, is it the east side homes on Montevideo that do not have easement right-ofways and the east side homes the city does, or is it the opposite?
Well, easement right-ofways, well, on the east side, the city acquired right-ofway decades ago. That is why the front yard setbacks are so narrow on the west, on the east side. So any widening, if that is the recommendation of the consultant, any widening would have to occur on the west side, because those are the yards that still have deep access. But there will be different alternatives that the consultant will look at, from striping to right-ofway acquisition, to potentially narrowing the perspective as to how to deal with the issues just at perhaps even the north end, which may require the purchase of homes as opposed to just acquiring right-ofway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, C three.
Just quick questions regarding those items. In reading the agreements, there is one, and I'm trying to find it real quickly. I have my pages marked. There were three or four of these. There is a provision in one of these, I'm not, I doubt it's, no, it's not Moncler Police Officers. It might be not, management, where it lists in one of the agreements, police uniform and fire uniform, yet in that particular classification, there are no police or fire personnel, actually, fire personnel where that stipulation regarding uniforms would, would apply. So I'm wondering why that was included when it doesn't apply to that.
Well, I'll remind you, this is a closed session item. It came from closed session, so is this inappropriate matter to be discussed in open session, or? Just for the city clerk, can you clarify that, please?
I'm addressing something that's in the public document.
I think it's appropriate to seek clarification.
Thank you.
So I don't know which agreement you're referring to, but in the case of the Police Officers Association MOU, the only two classifications that it deals with are the police officers and sergeants. So any reference to uniforms would be applicable in that instance. In the fire MOU, there would be no reference to police personnel in that MOU. It is possible that you're referring to the management agreements, because the management agreement for both executive management and for non-safety management and safety management does have both safety and non-safety in it. So there would be components related to uniforms for police personnel, as well as fire personnel, in both of the executive management agreements.
Okay.
And the management agreement.
I, I just found it. It is in the Moncler City Confidential Employees Association. Page, Article five, page one of the agreement, all the classifications. They don't list any fire personnel, yet on page, Article seven, page five, it does have a fire department paragraph regarding providing uniforms and all the other stipulations regarding uniforms. Is that just redundancy, or what? I don't understand why that would be included.
Well, there are members in the Confidential Employees Association that are also represented in the fire department as well as the police department. For example, cadets in the police department, though they're not confidential employees, but there are secretarial personnel within the police department as well as in the fire department that would be represented in the Moncler Confidential Employees Association that have uniforms, and therefore uniform issues would have to be addressed for those individuals.
Okay. You addressed Moncler Confidential. Management, non-safety and safety employees, Article six, page six. Again, it addresses the shift personnel discussion. Each, A two, each uniform employee shall be allowed to purchase work uniforms. It's that paragraph, second sentence. Department head approval must be obtained prior to purchase. The department head shall submit to the city manager's recommendations for articles of clothing to be considered essential uniform components, and no article of clothing shall be considered an essential uniform component until it receives such approval from the city manager. Why is it not just the department head or the deputy fire chief that would just sign off on those and approve the department?
Are these items that were part of our negotiations, Ed?
Well, they were at one time, yes.
Okay, so I don't think this is an appropriate place to be discussing this. These are, this is a labor, labor issue. I think, yeah, I think you have a question. I think you should have a conversation with the city manager in private to discuss it, as opposed to in public.
That, that cannot be feasibly done, because this is just brought to us. I am just seeing this in the review of my agenda.
Yeah, but it was not part of the last list of negotiations, so we're talking about something that has nothing to do with this last round of negotiations.
This was not an item that was brought to our attention. This is the first I'm seeing of it.
Okay, I, I, we'll point out that, just to bring some resolution to this, at one time, the fire captains were part of the management agreement, and they are shift personnel. So this is artifact language. It simply hasn't been removed at this time, because it hasn't been negotiated with members of the management group to take out language references related to the fire captains who were part of the management group at one time. So when it relates to the shift personnel, that is who this would specifically cover as it relates to fire personnel. So they have transition now to be covered under the Moncler Firefighters Association. We can't, we cannot take out language from a MOU or agreement arbitrarily. It has to be negotiated with representatives of the bargain group, and sometimes it, it just takes a few years to catch up with cleanup language.
And for the record, I was not seeking an amendment to strike or add language to this at all. I was just asking for clarification as to the process, and why it was your office as opposed to a department head in fire or the deputy fire chief. That was my question.
I understand, and it's just, I don't think this is the appropriate place to bring it up. I think a private conversation with the city manager would be more appropriate.
Well, the other items regarding the other MOUs are technical in nature like this, and if I'm going to be met with opposition of asking simple clarification questions, then I'll let the record.
Well, the question I had was, the last item dealt with the labor negotiations, which were closed session items. Excuse me.
Barely seen for the first time.
Ben, you're out of order. The last item, the reason why I raised this, because this dealt with closed session items. These are labor negotiations. You have to be real careful in how we apply this in a public hearing. As I stated before, you had concerns, you could have contacted the city manager and had a private conversation. You're free, now free to go into the rest of the consent calendar. What is your next item?
I think it was C six that was pulled. Regarding the, this is totally separate from the round of alley approved improvements that were approved and being conducted presently. I would just like to, I'm not opposed to the item. I like how a good chunk of the city is going to be repaved and for the benefit of those residents for the use of those alleys, and drainage and all that being put in that, where they are lacking. I would just like to raise again the, for those homes that do not have parking in the front of their homes, and they utilize the back of the property, and therefore they have to get access to alleys, that they be accommodated to use streets to park and not be ticketed during street sweeping days, that they be given waivers, and, and those restrictions be lifted. Please to accommodate them for the entire duration, from the moment the first ground is broken to the moment the new pavement is dry. That, that is the assurances I'd like from staff, please.
As you do know, we typically give notice to all of the residents where there is a paving project that will occur, letting them know of the length of period of time and any restrictions related to parking. If there are issues related to parking on street sweeping day, accommodation can be made to that. On the other hand, there are also streets in surrounding neighborhoods that may not have street sweeping on the same day or during a period of time in which the construction will occur, but we will make certain that there will not be any citations issued. If it means that we simply have to ask the police department to suspend the issue of citations on those days, we'll make certain that that occurs.
Mr. Starry, I, I appreciate that. That is something that I would, would ask. It's just not street sweeping days, because these individuals can't use the back access to the properties seven days, fourteen days, whatever the period is. So they need somewhere to park, even when it's not street sweeping days, and if they're on someone else's street, I think they should be accommodated, and, and any restrictions should be waived because of the inconvenience posed on them.
Are, are you talking about permit parking streets?
Anything. Permit parking, trash days, street sweeping days. Let me just give you a scenario. The, the homes on Kingsley, I believe is an area, a lot of them, because they're impacted with parking, will utilize their back parking. Well, that's going to be blocked off to them during the construction. They're going to need to park, so they may park on streets north and south of them, a couple blocks up, and if those streets have street sweeping, trash pickup, whatever the restrictions are, I think those residents should be granted some leeway and not be cited because of the inconvenience posed to them on the streets in which they originate from.
Even if there's a citation issued, and they make an appeal to the police department, and they state that the reason that they were parking on that street was because the fact that there was construction going on on their street or their alleyway, and they couldn't park on the street, for example, because of a street sweeping day, so they picked an alternative street, then the police department would take that into consideration as part of the appeal process and probably remove the parking citation from the record. But, so it would have to be examined on a case-by-case basis.
All right, sir, I appreciate that. Next item, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, next item is item D two, if I'm correct?
Yes. I just want a clarification. I know Mike Aragon is here in the room from BRTech. The rate increases, again, are the direct result of the new recycling mandates put on cities and businesses such as yours, correct? This is to offset the thirteen thirty-eight recycling organic waste stipulations.
Yeah, come on up, Mike, why don't you come on up, because I don't know, Ed, if you can give a, a brief presentation, this item, is it possible, Ed, or Mike, one of the two?
If that's the council's desire.
Yeah, I think we need to be, this affects trash rates here. I was actually going to ask some questions on this, but I don't know, just kind of explain what's going on here.
Okay, my pleasure. This evening, the council's asked to consider adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash three-three-nine-three. This would amend the fee schedule for the collection and disposal of residential and commercial refuse throughout the city of Moncler. Council is also asked to consider an approved agreement number twenty-two dash one-two-one, which would amend agreement number eighteen dash twenty-six with BRTech to incorporate collection program changes that would be related to the implementation of SB eighteen, thirteen eighty-three. That bill codifies the California Air Resources Board's short-lived climate pollution reduction strategies, specifically carb strategies related to implementation of a recyclable materials diversion program and organic materials diversion program. Council will recall that a workshop was conducted related to SB thirteen eighty-three earlier this year, in which all of the issues related to implementation of SB thirteen eighty-three, including its goals, objectives, and requirements, were addressed. Mr. Aragon was part of that presentation with the city when we made it to the city council. At that time, staff advised the members of the city council.
At that time, staff advised the members of the city council that an update to the fee schedule would be necessary to accommodate CPI adjustments, which BRTech has not had a fee rate increase since July of 2019. And pursuant to their contract, they are entitled to CPI adjustment on an annual basis with a maximum cap of 5%. In addition to that, there are costs associated with the implementation of SB 1383, so those charges would be built into the request for you to consider adjustments to the fee resolution that is before you today. The agreement changes that we are asking for include new definitions. These are required by SB 1383, updates to the collection system as they relate to the implementation of SB 1383, and SB 1383 compliant program for the recyclable materials and the organic materials diversion, which I've discussed. Cart-related requirements, as you know, from that presentation, there are colored requirements related to the carts or some other alternatives that can be addressed by a community. So, for example, in relation to the organic recyclables for residential properties, we're not issuing a new colored cart, but we are simply allowing residents to bag their organic waste in cellophane, cellophane bags and, and tying them up and then placing them into their green containers. That way, we don't have to issue new containers and then add additional costs to the relate, relation to the organic waste recycling program. There's also an enforcement program component to the implementation of SB 1383 and education and outreach services. All of those components are built into the rate adjustment as it relates to SB 1383 in addition to the CPI adjustments that the council is being asked to consider, again, pursuant to the contract between the city and BRTech. The proposed fee schedule also, also incorporates CPI adjustments as provided for in Agreement Number 18-26 between the city and BRTech. For both commercial and residential rates, BRTech last received, as I indicated earlier, a rate increase in July 1 of 2019 or approximately 3.5 years ago. The current request for rate adjustments would go into effect on January 1, 2023. Any delay in implementing that rate increase would entitle BRTech to another 5% CPI adjustment because of the way the contract works. The CPI adjustment is based on a calendar year basis, based on the CPI for the previous year. So, any increase delayed at this point in time would give them opportunity to ask for a CPI adjustment related to the current year that we are in now, and that would obviously result in an additional increase in the rates. As indicated on Table 1 of your agenda report, which is on page 238 of your agenda packet, the maximum residential refuse rate effective between July 22 and July 23 is $38.70. BRTech is proposing a monthly residential rate increase from $31.84 to $37.64. That's an increase of $5.80 per month. If you average that out over 3.5 years, the last time that BRTech asked for a rate increase, that would level out to approximately $1.94 per household per month for the rate increase. The proposed 37 to 64 residential rate adjustment falls within the Proposition 218 maximum refuse rate established through the Proposition 218 process, and as you know, each time that we adjust the, we have to conduct a Proposition 218 hearing. We have to contact the public, let them attend the 218 hearing, provide their comments, and it comes before the city council for a public hearing to be considered at the city council at that time, and the maximum rates established are good for a five-year period of time. In this particular case, the Prop 218 refuse rate will expire July of 2023, so this is the last adjustment that can be made under the current Proposition 218 hearing that was conducted approximately four and a half years ago. And so, any increase after July of 2018 will have to involve a new Prop 218 hearing. That would be both for the residential as well as the commercial rate adjustments. The senior household rate continues to be reduced by 20%, increasing from $25.47 monthly to $30.11. That increase represents a $4.64 monthly increase, similar to the regular household averaged over 3.5 years. That monthly increase results in a $1.55 per senior household increase on, on each of those annual 3.5-year basis. Specifics of the residential refuse rate are listed on Pages 239 and 240 of your city agenda packet and are summarized in Table 2 on Page 240. The rate adjustments show no increases to city-specific programs. However, there is an increase for the household hazardous waste. That is a pass-through payment that the county imposes on each of the cities, that contract with the county related to hazardous, hazardous household wastes. The actual increase for hazardous household, household hazardous waste is 65 cents per residential household. However, the city is assessing only a 10-cent increase up from the current 45 cents to 55 cents. The city will be absorbing the other 10 cents related to that particular component for this, at least for this cycle. Fee components of the commercial refuse rate are identified on Page 241 of your agenda packet, oh, and 242 as well. Current and proposed rates are identified in Attachment 1, which is on Page 244. That's that chart, Attachment 1 on Page 244 of your agenda packet. Similar to the residential refuse rate, commercial rates cannot exceed the maximum rate increase established through the Proposition 218 hearing process, and the maximum Proposition 218 commercial rates are identified again on Table 1 of your agenda packet, which is Page 238, and those rates are based on, again, the CPI and costs related to implementing Fiscal impact, failure to implement the proposed residential and commercial refuse rates is indicated in Resolution Number 22-3393 would have a estimated $283,900 impact on the general fund related to proposed increases for residential service, refuse service, and an estimated $150,000 impact on the general fund related to proposed increases for commercial refuse rates. So, if the council doesn't approve the resolution as presented this evening, the city would have to absorb all of the cost increases related to BRTech's requests. That is pursuant to their agreement. They're entitled to the requests that they ask for as long as it complies with the provisions in the agreement, and BRTech is certainly within the requirements of the agreement, and they even are, have come in less. So, taking into consideration that they haven't asked for an increase in three and a half years, which is actually par for the course for BRTech. They never come back on an annual basis. It's usually two, three, sometimes even four years before they even come back and ask for a rate increase. The city's general fund currently absorbs 20% of the cost of the residential refuse service for senior households, and again, is proposing absorbing the 10 cent per household impact for household hazardous waste services. The residents will realize a 10-cent increase, but the city will absorb the other 10 cents as they indicated goes from 45 cents to 65 cents based on current rates from San Bernardino County, but we are only assessing 55 cents to the households in Montclair. Combined, the estimated impact for the senior household rate and the increase and the city absorbing that 20% and the 10 cent on the household hazardous waste, I estimate probably around $50,000 a year in the impact on the general fund. Resolution Number 22-3393 also incorporates a new bulky item component. This, I think, responds to requests from the city council that we be more deliberate in addressing the bulky items that are put on city streets by residents on a regular basis. We already have a program with BRTech that their drivers, as they see bulky items, they report those bulky items to their headquarters, and then headquarters dispatches a truck to pick up those bulky items, but that is generally narrowed to specific areas of the city, particularly alleyways. This would expand the program throughout the city, and BRTech would assume that responsibility. Anytime there's a bulky item on the streets, it becomes BRTech's responsibility to pick up those bulky items. This results in a $1.51 per yard, per cubic yard increase on the commercial and multifamily rate, and while that impacts those particular areas, the effort by BRTech will be throughout the community, wherever there is a bulky item that is dropped on city streets. In addition to that, residents will continue to be able to call into BRTech and schedule a pickup of bulky items that they put on the street. BRTech can't go on private property. If somebody puts a bulky item on private property, they cannot go on private property and take that. One, because they don't know that they're disposing of that, and two, that would be trespassing, so that is not something that they can do.
And what denotes private property? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The sidewalk?
It generally needs to be on the street next to the waste bin.
So, if they put something in the street next to the waste container, that means it's a bulky item. If it's on the sidewalk, it's not.
If it's on the sidewalk, that's city right-of-way, and they can take it off of a sidewalk.
So, we just need to make sure people know, put it in the street.
Well, they need to put it in the street because if they put it on the sidewalk, they're blocking pedestrian pathway, and that would be illegal. That would be a violation, and they could be cited for that.
Right. Yeah. The, the short answer is, put it in the street. Thank you.
That is correct. Staff's recommendation is that the council adopt Resolution Number 22-3393, amending the fee schedule for residential and commercial refuse service and approve Agreement Number 22-121, amending Agreement Number 18-26 with BRTech for solid waste management services subject to necessary changes by the city attorney. Finance Director Janet Kolbeck and Mike Aragon from BRTech are also available to respond to any questions the council members may have.
Okay. Councilman Lopez.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Aragon, real quickly, in our staff report, it, it says that the proposed adjustment stems from two components, an increase in service costs related to the CPI adjustments and the remainder of the increase attributed to the increased costs related to SB 1383. Is it fair to say, correct me if I'm wrong, that the latter, the incurred, the costs that are being passed on to you by, as a result of the passage of SB 1383 as the result, or the main impetus for these changes or the increased rates?
Yes, councilman. It, 1383 has two components. There's an operational component, the actual collection and processing of organic waste, and there's a very extensive administrative component where reporting and audits of all the programs and processes take place and are reported to the, reported to the state. So, you are, the city of Montclair is, is covered from, from both sides with this rate adjustment.
And maybe you can answer this for the city manager. I was going to ask regarding the administrative fee function. It states that the administrative fee is a charge imposed by the city to reimburse for the cost of administering the refuse service program. The current fee is $3.99 per month. Is that what Mr. Aragon just addressed with respect to his administrative expenses as a result of that?
No, that's a city-related fee, and I don't believe that's been increased in a decade or longer.
Okay, so it's two separate fees then. Okay. And then, since the city manager brought up the bulky item issue, and now the new agreement is that BRTech will assume the responsibility, if they see something in public, in the public right-of-way or in alleys or whatnot, that they will be called in and they'll be picked up automatically, correct?
They'll be called in. First of all, to elaborate on what the city manager had mentioned, again, multifamily, commercial, a lot of times we'll have individuals dumped behind a grocery store or at a service station. Apartments, sometimes the landlords let them put it out, sometimes they don't. Now, we'll have designated areas for all apartments, so if you move ins and move outs, whether there are appliances, couches, chairs, desks, anything, will all be picked up. Then, in, as you know, we already have a residential program, and those items, there are allowed five items every time they put out. They should put them out at curbside so not to impede the sidewalks, but if we see something in a, in a street median or outside of city hall or whatever else, then those items would be picked up as well.
And the option for residents to still call in and utilize their four free pickups a year still exists?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. But in addition to that, as, as an additive extra mechanism of cleanup, your staff will go pick up things that you see?
Yes. Now, they're not, they're not residential, for example, they have four collections, five items per resident. Doesn't mean that residents can, can put out more stuff.
No, I get it.
It's these incidental, and a lot of times, they're not even coming from our local community, and someone will drop it off, or a contractor will, will leave something. Regardless of the situation, if we notice it or if the city notices it, we will call into our office. I work with Ms. Kol, with Janet over there, and we'll report it to the local office and then send a vehicle to get it picked up.
I, I want to compliment your staff. I have, well, this has been a pet peeve of mine to have bulky items just dumped throughout the city.
Yeah.
It just, it creates a public health issue because kids can get hurt, individuals can get hurt, it blocks the pathway of folks with disabilities, so thank you for that. If it's been responsive, and many times within a half hour, staff's there picking up an item. That said, I have meant to call this in. You guys brought it, you put a reminder in my head. There's a home in the alley where we, behind us, 4760 Rosewood, has repeatedly thrown unused tires, and there's about three or four there that exist at the moment. So, if those could be picked up soon, that'd be appreciated since we're talking about the issue. But thank you for being here. Thank you for answering the questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you, council member.
Mike, I have some questions. So, the bulk of this increase is related to the SB, whatever that bill's called?
1383.
1383. The bulk of the increase is related to that?
Yes.
And what's causing the increase? You mentioned administration. There's a lot of reporting requirements.
Right. The other is the processing, the literal processing, I believe. The city manager described how food waste is going to be collected not only here in Montclair but in other cities in the Indian Empire that are serviced by BRTech. So, to prevent an additional barrel from being delivered to your home, which the state says, okay, you got a black barrel for trash, you have a blue barrel for recycling, green for green waste, and they wanted us to deliver a brown barrel for food waste. An extra barrel would mean an additional truck, so now you would have, under that scenario, you'd have four trucks going down your residential streets throughout the week with every collection. It's bad enough we have three.
Right.
So, taking that material, that food waste, putting it and mixing it in with your green waste, we pull, we preserve having to purchase another container and another truck. We pick it all together. It does need to be bagged because it can't, for the most part, mix with the organic or the grass and, and other organics. We take it back to our facility and we, at this point in time, we are literally manually pulling those bags out, opening the bags, putting the food waste in the containers to be processed, and then process the green waste. That is very labor-intensive. The processing cost just about doubled, just at the Murph. There's no additional collection cost because we're still picking up the same green barrel. That's where a majority of your cost comes in from that standpoint, and then obviously the administrative cost. But we have been able to work out with Mr. Starr and, and staff, a very competitive cost component for the administration, which also includes a very state-of-the-art reporting mechanism that staff has access to as well as we do, and all that material is gathered and sent to the state. So, you are covered from A to Z.
And then going forward, what, these, I mean, you had, that's the first rate increase three and a half years, so you're kind enough to, to wait until now, which, you know, 18-point percent increase, residents are going to say, whoa, if you average it out, I realize it's, it's different. But going forward, do you anticipate any serious rate increases in the future right now? Or you think, as long as the economy, the inflation goes down and?
Yeah, the, obviously with this particular increase, we'll probably be looking at 12 to 18 months, and, and I may be back here in front. As much as, as, as Mr. Starr mentioned, we try to avoid and postpone or, or try to make do with the rate adjustments that we have, the costs of disposal and processing are just skyrocketing. Fortunately, our recycling market is coming back, so that offsets some of that increase, but... But if that is your question, Mr. Mayor, it's probably a 12 to 18 month rather than a 36 or 48 month period of time.
We'll see you back here somewhere by July 2024.
Unless you want me a little sooner than.
No, no. And then, so Ed, I'm assuming that next year or the year after, we're going to have to go back out and do a 218. Am I correct, Ed?
For rate increase, I mean, we obviously wouldn't do it in July of 2023 unless they're asking at that point in time. But once they ask, we will have to do it.
Yeah, it will probably be in, in '24, and, and generally, we do the, the five-year projection. And this is our, our last year of our last five.
Okay. Councilman Rue, do you have anything?
First of all, I hope everybody considers, whether it's this one or Prop 218, many of our residents are still struggling to pay their bills, and we need to consider that. You had mentioned something about a five-year issue, that we can only do this every five years, yet we can come back in 2024.
The Prop 218 hearing, the rates established, the maximum rates established can only continue for a five-year period. We have to come back every five years to do a new Prop 218.
So if we approve $38.70 a month right now, we can't come back for, that's it for five years?
No, that would be the increase until July of 2023. They can't go beyond that number until after we do a new hearing after July 2023.
So whatever we decide on then would be good for five years?
Yes.
This is crazy.
So BRTech would project what their maximum rates would be over the next five years. We would conduct a hearing with residents and commercial property owners. They would come before us, give their input, and then we would bring it to the city council for the city council's consideration and approval.
It's already high enough, but, uh, the other item I have, I'm glad to hear the bulk items will be picked up. I know during the summer, on, not on my street, but in my neighborhood, somebody had a large headboard sitting out for a good two weeks. Finally, it was picked up. Whether somebody just picked it up, driving down the street and wanted it, I don't know. You know, a lot of times residents do that, hoping that some of the, you know, these kind of roaming people that pick up trash will do that. I just, I'm glad to hear that that stuff will be picked up. Many residents don't know that they have a bulk pickup. In other cases, they're just not thinking. So I'm glad that that will be handled. And I had a question, so that we know for our senior citizens, who may be out there tonight virtually, for the senior citizen program. They must be age, what is the age and the income limit?
Well, for the senior discount rate, I believe they just have to be 65 years or older, and they have to apply.
65 and over, they have to apply, okay. And what is the income level?
There's no income level. It's just you just have to be 65 or over, and the bill has to be in your name.
Okay. That's good, because I know people, I will talk to about that. Thank you.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Any more questions regarding this item, the BRTech item? So regarding the consent calendar, unless there's no, somebody has an objection to one of the items, I would ask for a motion. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for the consent calendar, as discussed this evening.
Heard a second here. Second by Johnson, moved by Mr. Rue. And let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Rue?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson? And Mayor De Trey.
Aye, so that's adopted 5-0. Okay, next item, our two business items are kind of related to each other, different employees. Do we need a presentation, this item's pretty, if not, city-
Have a presentation under CalPERS regulations.
I'm sorry?
You have a verbal presentation.
Then let's have a presentation.
Mr. Mayor, murder city council presented to the Pension Reform Act of 2012, and the California Government Code, council is requested to consider adoption of Resolution Number 22-3392, which would make the necessary findings for the exception of the 100-day wait period to hire Leslie Phillips, who will be retired in Newton after December 30, 2022. This would allow us to hire her into a temporary part-time position, which would be the same title she has now, benefits coordinator. Ms. Phillips served in various capacities with the city during her course of employment, including the benefits coordinator, since her hire date in February of 1991. In the part-time retired in Newton position, Ms. Phillips will work on a temporary part-time basis and will remain below the 960 permitted hours per fiscal year under CalPERS regulations. Her specialized skills are needed by the city to assist with training, to assist with training her successor, and to assist with critical human resources functions going forward. Ms. Phillips served as a part-time, Mrs. Phillips' service as a part-time in Newton will ensure that this crucial work will be performed in a timely and effective manner. She's expected to remain in the position through the first quarter of fiscal year 2023, '24. And the maximum base salary for the in Newton cannot be higher than the wage that she was earning. In this particular case, based on the number of hours, she'll be working on a monthly basis, which we expect to be about 25. That maximum salary will be about $6,510 a month. Hiring Ms. Phillips to the retired in Newton position will create a $22,536 fiscal impact on the general fund for the balance of the current fiscal year. Staff recommends that the council adopt Resolution Number 22-3392, making certain findings for an exception to the 180-day wait period, subject to any necessary changes as may, as may be requested by CalPERS and as approved by the city attorney.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor, move for approval as presented.
I will second.
Wait, vote. Diane, you had some changes, subject to make any necessary changes may be requested by CalPERS as approved by the city attorney?
Yes, and Mr. Starr mentioned that as well.
Okay.
So we're good.
All right, roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez? Councilmember Rue? Mayor Pro Tim Johnson? And Mayor De Trey?
Aye, adopt a 5-0. Okay, next one.
Uh, this item is similar to the previous one, so I'll be much briefer on this. Mrs. Elizabeth Liu has served in various capacities with the city, including payroll analyst, which is the temporary in Newton position that we would ask to be assigned to. She's been employed with the city since March of 1997, has been an excellent performer in all the positions she's been assigned to. Her retirement date will be December 30, 2022, and her date of hiring the in Newton position will be January 3 of 2023. Her specialized skills are needed to assist with training her successor and assist with critical finance and payroll duties, which involve critical and complex work. Her service as a part-time in Newton will ensure that this vital work is completed on a timely, accurate, and, and within each designated payroll period. She, like Mrs. Phillips, is expected to remain in this position into the first quarter of fiscal year 2023, '24, and her maximum base salary will be $6,657 per month, based on working 20 hours a week, as opposed to 25 hours a week for Mrs. Phillips. Her impact on the general fund for the remainder of the current fiscal year will be approximately Staff recommends council adopt Resolution Number 22-3394, making findings for an exception to the 180-day wait period, subject to any necessary changes, as may be requested by CalPERS and as approved by the city attorney.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would happily move the item be adopted as presented. I remember when she was the-
I will second.
-front desk person who was always there being cheery and smiling to everyone that came in, so it's good to see her that she's still with us.
Okay, moved by Lopez, second by Rue, roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Lopez, Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Member Rue?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Aye, adopt a 5-0. Okay, communications, I'll start with the city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just the one item that's indicated in the agenda, and that's the council to meet in closed session regarding real property negotiations with Mr. Starr as our designated negotiator. Other than that, I have nothing else this evening, except to wish everyone a wonderful Christmas and New Years.
Myself, I'm, I'm sorry, city manager Starr.
No items other than to wish everyone a happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. I just want to announce that, if you haven't seen your email yet, there are two general plan workshops, joint meeting between the city council and the planning commission. The first date is on Thursday, January the 12th, and the second date will be on Thursday, January 19th. Both, both workshops will begin at 6:00 PM. I guess we'll have hard copies, the documents will be available in the council, in, in the council offices by the, by the end of this week, even though we have, the carpet's being moved. So again, against January the 12th and January 19th, both are Thursdays, and it will begin at 6:00 PM in council chambers, and that'll be, that will include the planning commission. Again, there's an email about that. And again, I would just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Years, and obviously Happy Hanukkah as well. Councilmember Rue?
Yes, I have other things to say tonight, but due to the lateness of the hour, I will defer to a later date. I do want to wish everybody a very happy season. This is a special time of year, and it is celebrated in many cultures, many faiths, many traditions, and in many, many different varieties. All of them are wonderful, all of them are splendid. I will say for those of us who are of the Christian tradition, let us remember that the first documented homeless family was a young mother who was great with child, her husband, looking for a place to stay on a cold night. A good innkeeper took them in. They then found themselves on a flight into Egypt, no place to go. They had to cross borders. They had to endure quite a bit. They were homeless, searching for a place. When we think of those who are down on their luck, let us remember that family. Let us look at those who are the last, the least, the lost, and the lonely in a very different light. Let's see what we can do to help them and not demonize them. That's what the spirit of this holiday is about. Let us always look on our friends and neighbors with compassion. Let's not talk about the family across the street with too many cars and too many people living there and how trashy they are. If you don't like it, go over and help them. Don't look to government to do it, you can do it yourself. You can pick up a paintbrush and help your neighbor. Let's look at everybody, whether in our community or another community, with the dignity that they deserve. You heard me say this just a few days ago, we are all God's children, deserving of respect, dignity, and equality. That's what this holiday is about. Remember the working-class men and women of this and every other community, who pay their taxes, rear their children, never complain, and are just basic, good citizens. Let us think about them. And most of all, as we go into this season and into the new year, may it bring everybody peace. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, real quickly, on December 13th, I believe that was Tuesday, I had the pleasure of helping the Ayala family, the owners of Los Portales Restaurants, both the Montclair and Chino restaurants. They had a toy drive for disadvantaged kids, foster youth and whatnot. There were about 500 attendees that attended the event at the Chino location. They had collected toys for a series of weeks, and many of those benefactors of those toys were Montclair kids, so it was great to be on hand and help them with their event. It was a fun time held by, had by all. They had a train there, they had Santa, they had mariachis, they had folklorical dancers. It was Taco Tuesday, as a matter of fact, so people were fed tacos. It was a great event, they had some vendors there. So kudos to them for extending some generosity and making Christmas bright for some disadvantaged youth. Tonight is the second night of Hanukkah, as my colleagues have stated. To our Jewish friends, family, and neighbors, Happy Hanukkah to you as you celebrate the Festival of Lights for eight crazy nights, as Adam Sandler likes to call it. And to the rest of you that are of the Christian faith, Merry Christmas to you, God bless you, may you have a prosperous year ahead. This is our final council meeting of the year, so we will see you next year. Many blessings to you, stay safe, drive slow, drive safe out there, folks, and enjoy the benefits of the holiday. God bless you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson. I know, I know you're not used to that name, but-
I know, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I want to offer condolences to Bruce Cope and his family, as they had a death this morning. So our thoughts and prayers are with them, and we are here to support them. And secondly, for the residents of Montclair, I wish you Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Feliz Navidad, Happy Kwanzaa, seasons greetings, and I wish you a healthy and prosperous 2023. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And finally, Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. Well, first, I want to thank all of the residents of Montclair who participated in the holiday home decoration. I was able to drive around in the bus with the CAC and see all of the decorated houses, so that was a lot of fun. We even went to at least one house that was not on the list of nominations, and later that night, I dragged my family to some of the same houses we went to, so. It was very nice of our residents to put that much effort in, in order to make the holidays brighter for the adults and the kids in the community. And happy holidays to everyone, Happy New Year, can't wait to see you all next year. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a committee minutes in the agenda, and at this time, we will now go into a closed session.